Folks, Black Star Network is peace.
Hey, no punches!
I'm real revolutionary right now.
Support this man, black media. He makes sure that our stories are told.
Thank you for being the voice of black America, Roland.
Hey, black, I love y'all.
All momentum we have now, we have to keep this going.
The video looks phenomenal.
See, there's difference between Black Star Network and black owned media and something like CNN.
You can't be black on media and be skate.
It's time to be smart.
Bring your eyeballs home.
You dig?
Folks, it is Friday, October 14th, 2022. Coming up on Roland Martin Unfiltered, streaming live on the Black Star Network. Lots of questions remain regarding the death of a black man shot by police in Mississippi. Folks are questioning the police narrative and the death of Jaheem McMillan, his family. They are saying, why did the officer shoot and kill? In city in Los Angeles, the city council, new city council president, President Mitchell Farrell says the council cannot move forward unless two remaining racist council members, both Latinos, resign. We will talk with the first black woman to serve on the LA City Council in nearly 10 years about what is going on in the city. Civic organizations across the country are doing what they can to ensure that all eligible voters are registered. We'll talk with Barbara Onwine with the Transformative Justice Coalition about what is called the voter cade. Also, a Georgia county is now at the heart of discrimination lawsuit filed by the US Justice Department following the, following the termination of two black men. And, and our education matters segment, an optometry organization wants to create a pipeline for black students to get into the eye care field. Folks, lots to talk about, so let's go. It's time to bring the funk on Roland Martin Unfiltered, the Black Star Network. Let's go. All right, folks, conflicting stories out of Gulfport, Mississippi, in the shooting of a black teen. Protesters are demanding the body cam footage be released in the shooting death of Jaheem McMillan. Witnesses say the 15-year was walking out of a store when a police officer shot him. Police say the teen had a gun. Now, they also say McMillan was involved in an incident involving several minors waving guns and chasing a motorist. Officers pulled the youth over, the youth over in a Family Dollar parking lot. McMillan reportedly got out of the car and refused to comply with commands to drop his weapon. Police say the teen pointed a gun at them and officers shot the teen in the head. One witness says she did not see McMillan with a weapon. Other witnesses say officers handcuffed the teen and did not render aid as he bled out in front of the store. McMillan was taken to the hospital where he remained on life support until Saturday, when he passed away. Earlier this week, the Gulfport Police Chief Adam Cooper laid out the details of what police say what took place.
This tragic situation has touched many lives. I understand everybody wants answers on what led up and happened in this deadly encounter. Words from me will do little to comfort the individuals involved. I'll start with saying I've requested the Mississippi Bureau of Investigation take over the entirety of the investigation from the charges of aggravated assault to the officer involved shooting in order for all circumstances and facts to be investigated by an outside agency. I assure with you now what I know. The Gulfport Police Department received a telephone complaint from a 911 caller about a motorist in a silver Kia Soul with a Georgia state license plate. The company was by several subjects later identified as McMillan, Bell, Thomas, Ellis, and Cooper. They were brandishing firearms of passing motorists and began chasing one of them. This occurred in the area of Highway 605 and Magnolia Street. This description of the vehicle is passed along, along with a tag information, is distributed to our officers through the Gulfport Police Department Communications Division. The Kia Soul was located in the area or the intersection of Pass Road and Eighth Avenue as it was entering the Family Dollar parking lot. Two officers in two separate marked units entered the parking lot behind the vehicle. Immediately, two individuals exited the vehicle and began to flee. Officers exited their vehicles with loud verbal commands, giving, giving them instruction to stop fleeing. One of the officers observed McMillan, who was armed. The officer gave chase to McMillan, or again, sorry, gave orders for him to stop and drop his weapon. McMillan did not comply. McMillan turned both his body and his weapon towards the officer. The officer fired at McMillan. McMillan was struck by the bullet and fell. The same officer then turned his attention back to the vehicle. He observed one of the vehicle occupants outside the vehicle and another one exiting. The officer ordered the suspect to the ground and he complied and laid on the ground. The suspect was later found to have a weapon in his waistband when he was taken into custody. The other individual still in the car was ordered to exit the vehicle and lay on the ground. He also complied and was taken into custody. The suspect that fled north that was pursued by the first officer was tracked down by canines. He was located, he complied, and he was taken into custody. A firearm was found in close proximity to him. McMillan was transported to a local area hospital, suffering from a single gunshot wound, and was later lifted to the Anadis State Hospital. There are lots of stories in traditional and social media on what transpired on October 6th at the Family Dollar, at Eighth Avenue and Pass Road. Many of them are simply wrong. People are posting and identifying our officer, Lieutenant Brian Watson, as the officer that was involved in this incident, along with the address, photographs of him, his family, and his children. Let me just say this, he has nothing to do with this. He was in fact out of state when this occurred. I respect everyone's right to freedom of speech and to protest. This simply is a malicious attack on a family for no reason, and no basis in fact, and these actions are inexcusable. Mississippi law is now clear as of July 1st, that the Attorney General's Office now has jurisdiction in cases where officers use deadly force. The Gulfport Police Department is cooperating fully with the investigation. The Gulfport Police Department also conducts its own internal investigation to violations of its policy. If any are found, it'll be taken into consideration and it'll be...
Okay, chief, keep going.
I have turned over all evidence, radio traffic, 911 calls, to our dispatch center, as well as all dashboard camera, body cam footage from this event. I've been assured by the Attorney General's Office this will be a timely and thorough investigation. The evidence will be released, as always, upon its conclusion. And that's all I have to say.
Attorney Ben Crump and Jaheem's mother on Monday's show. But look, let's just be clear, until they release the body cam footage, we can't believe the police. Let's go to my panel. Dr. Jason Nichols, senior lecturer, African American Studies Department, University of Maryland College Park. Michael M. Hotep, host of the African History Network show. Matt Manning, civil rights attorney, glad to have all three of you on the show. Matt, I mean, look, we're, we're simply at the point, because where we have seen far too many police officers lie, that until that body cam footage is released, we can't accept the police's version. I, I can do, show you countless stories where the police said one thing happened, and then when we saw the body cam footage, it was a whole different story.
You're exactly right. We can't take them at their word at this point, because we've seen so many videos that show us what they said originally isn't the truth of what happened. Beyond that, what I found particularly troubling by Chief Cooper's statement is he spent so much time, rather than comforting the community and the family, so much time trying to chide the community. And if you noticed, he kept putting emphasis on the word complied. This person complied, that person complied. Your constitutional rights, you still have whether you comply or not. So what's problematic about this is he's automatically putting everyone else on the defense and trying to set up this narrative that not only is this police officer and his family being attacked, but that, you know, the community needs to wait and, you know, we did our due diligence by sending it out to an, an outside investigative agency. But all of that notwithstanding, I mean, this is a child. And for him to come out with that kind of callousness, I think shows you what we see in these cases. And you're right, we've seen way too many videos in the last few months, last few years, where what the police said originally didn't end up being true. So I'm surprised that they didn't get authority from the other state agencies to release this video if what they're saying happened actually happened, because that's usually what they do.
Oh, absolutely. And, and Jason, you know, look, cops used to always, people automatically believed it. And I think part of the problem that we have in this country right now is that the public, especially the media, mainstream media, automatically runs with the police version when these things happen. And so all of a sudden, their version of events becomes the official narrative. And so in essence, you're trying to disprove with what they say. Well, guess what? We're not gonna buy your version. Last night, we had Justin Fairfax on, talking about the case of Donovan Lynch in Virginia Beach, where he was shot and killed by the cops. Cop didn't turn his body cam footage on. And so again, hopefully this cop did. So until we see that body cam footage, we're not believing him. Ben Crump represents the family in Houston. Cops laid out this whole narrative until we saw the body cam footage where they rolled up unmarked cars firing, okay? Never, never shouted, didn't see a weapon, nothing. So their initial story was a lie based upon what the body cam footage showed.
I mean, honestly, you know, me being in the Baltimore area, I certainly know about the Gun Trace Task Force and what they did and the fact that they were able to make up narratives and actually plant guns on people that they wanted to arrest, plant drugs on some occasions. So this idea that we're all of a sudden supposed to always trust the police narrative, when in fact, we actually have the evidence through body cam and dash cam footage, it doesn't, doesn't make sense. Just show us the material, show us what actually happened. And as a matter of fact, one of the things that I think needs to be talked about on a nationwide policy standpoint, is the fact that people should not be able to turn on and off their body cameras. It seems like each jurisdiction has a different kind of body camera. Some people can mute their body cameras, some people can turn them on and off. So if they're going to commit a crime, or something where they think involves force, you know, who's gonna turn on their body camera to put themselves through that kind of scrutiny? So it doesn't really make sense. Only time police officers would keep their body camera on is when they want, they think the body camera will exonerate them or will help them in a situation. But having, giving police officers that option, particularly in high-stress situations, even if they don't have bad intentions, doesn't make sense. The information is out there, release it to the public, be transparent. That's what police departments owe the public.
No, and, and that's the thing. And, you know, we've seen examples, I think it was a, I think it was a story out of Ohio, Michael, where that was, I think it was where the girl got into a fight, she had a knife and she was charging another girl, and, and people began to circulate the story. What did the police do? They immediately put the body cam footage out. So it shut down speculation, and that's what should happen. So I'm sorry, I, I am simply not going to believe what the police chief says, what the officers are to say, until we can see ourselves. If the video shows that he had a gun, the video's gonna show that he had a gun. And so then, if there are witnesses who say he didn't have one, if the video shows it, they're lying. But until we see that, I'm sorry, I just simply do, I simply cannot, in today's society, I cannot trust any version coming from the police. I don't care if it's a black cop, it's a black chief, or it's a white chief.
Especially in Mississippi. If you understand the history of Mississippi, especially in Mississippi. So when we, you know, when we look at this, I read the article from ABC News and I listened to the police chief as well. And, you know, I have a lot of questions here. First of all, I didn't hear, did you hear the police chief mention body camera footage at all?
Yeah, he did.
Oh, okay. All right. Because in the article here from ABC News, it didn't, it didn't mention it. But if they had incriminating body camera footage that showed Jaheem, Jaheem McMillan with a gun, I think they would have released it already by now. Because this, this, this took place, this incident took place October 6th, 2022. If, if they had incriminating body camera footage of him with a gun, I think they probably would have released it by now. So, and another thing I want to know, okay, were there fingerprints on the gun, were there his fingerprints on a gun that you retrieved? What caliber was the gun that you retrieved? Were there powder, gunpowder burns on his hands as well? So there's so many, and what type of gun was it? You know, so there's so many questions that I have regarding this situation. So hope now, the, I know the Mississippi Attorney General's Office has jurisdiction over this case. I don't know if that's good or bad, to tell you the truth, I don't know. I just know Mississippi don't have a good track record. The, the state of Mississippi does not have a good track record when it comes to this. So hopefully justice will prevail. Hopefully we'll get more information when you have Attorney Crump on the show on Monday.
Indeed. So again, so we'll see what happens in that case. All right, y'all, let's go to Ohio, where the eight Ohio police officers who shot more than 90 rounds of ammunition hitting an unarmed black man about 60 times, they're back at work. Jalen Walker was killed in June by Akron police officers after a brief car chase. The officers had been on paid administrative leave since the shooting. Protesters have been marching in the streets since the officers were placed back on active duty in non-uniformed, non-civilian contact roles. Lieutenant Michael Miller released the following statement about the officer's reinstatement. Wasn't a rash decision, but one that was painstaking. In fact, when we look at the staffing shortages that we have, nearly 50. If you add the officers that are out on injuries to that number, that number grows. It was a difficult decision. Akron Police Lieutenant Michael Miller stated, "We just want folks to understand that we understand, we get it, but we had to also be responsive and responsible to growing daily public safety needs of this community, including some of the violence that young people are being impacted by." The Walker family attorneys said this about the officers going back to work. The decision to reinstate these officers, even to death's duty, fails to take into account a pending investigation into their actions that culminated in Jalen's brutal shooting and unjustifiable death resulting from a barrage of more than 90 bullets. This decision undermines the legitimacy of the investigative process the Walker family has been asked to follow, in which BCI has led to this point. On behalf of the Walker family, we call on the city of Akron to do the right thing and place the officers back on leave until the investigation has been completed. Well, it's, I mean, I, I get this whole idea of, oh my goodness, we have shortages. But, but the reality, Matt, is you don't want these folks involved in any sort of police capacity until you finish an investigation. 90 rounds? Eight cops?
Absolutely. It's absurd. It's absurd. They should not be back on duty in any respect. And this is really stupid, because police departments have a lot of civilians who work for them. So most police departments have even civilian investigators. So to say that they couldn't supplement it or find other people to fill roles beyond people who were involved in a very heinous shooting is BS. And I think one of the things that people need to realize is officers have a lot of civil service protection. So what they might not be saying that's truthful is that these officers may be going through a grievance process or some other employment process that allows them to stay on the force and makes it hard for them to fire them. And that's one of the systemic issues that has to be addressed. It's very hard, a lot of times, for police officers to be fired, even when they do things like this. But I think this is a bad move, because it undermines the credibility of any investigation, particularly if the Akron department is involved in investigating itself. There's no way to be assured that these officers are not gonna be involved in the investigation. And there's no way to be assured that if a grand jury doesn't return indictments, that the fix isn't in. I mean, we know it is, because it happens all the time. But this is, I think, even more problematic, because it allows them access to the process.
Michael?
Yeah, you know, this is shocking. Now, it is true that nationwide, there are a lot of police departments are down, are short police officers, right here in Detroit. According to the reporting, about two months ago, Detroit police are down 223 police officers. But to put these eight back on the force, it's just, it's just ridiculous. Now, one of the things that Akron Police Chief Steve Milet should be doing and leading the initiative on, if they're not already doing this, is recruiting from the African American community. If you're, if you're short police officers, you should be focused on recruiting from the African American community to bring about more diversity and focus on these, these African Americans becoming the type of officers that we all say that we want to see. Those that de-escalate situations, those that don't racially profile, those that only use lethal force as a last resort. This is a, this is a grand opportunity, a great opportunity for something like that to happen. And I would say, and their recruiting efforts all across the country, I would say some of the first people that need to be applying to these police departments are the, are the activists. Because now you can have a huge impact inside the police departments and in your communities as well. More and more police departments are putting in place duty to intervene policies, which means if you see something wrong and you're an officer, you're on duty, what have you, you can intervene to stop it. So instead of you standing on the sidelines, and I know a lot of the activists mean well and do good work, but instead of you standing on the sidelines and recording what takes place, you can show your badge and actually intervene and help stop it. So this is a grand opportunity across the country for African Americans to apply to these police departments and become the type of officers that we say we want to see.
Jason, I mean, absolutely right. And I do think, as I listen to these, all these police departments around the country talk about, oh, how it's hard for them to find police officers, this is also means you might be wanting to change how you recruit a type of officers, what you looking for. Look, you keep talking about more resources going to them, well, guess what? Pay up and go out and recruit folks, and, and let's, and let's, let's see what happens.
Absolutely. I think one of the things we want is high-quality officers, officers who want to do the job and want to do the job the correct way, as Michael said. I think one of the systemic things we need to do, and I know a lot of my, my activist friends disagree with me, but you need to pay cops more. Because in our society, when you pay someone more, you can expect more. You can expect the highest level of professionalism. And also, it's easier to recruit. And also you, it's easier to recruit, uh, the right kinds of people and the people, you know, there are police departments out there where you barely need a high school diploma to become a police officer. And we don't want like 19 year olds out there on the streets with guns. I know when I was 19, I, I would not have been the kind of guy you would have wanted to stop you at a traffic stop, particularly if you're agitated. So again, I think, you know, one of the things we need is high quality policing. Uh, in a lot of places, I'm sure that there are staffing shortages, but I think in a lot of places, people think you need more police, but when actually you need better policing. So, uh, we need highly trained, high quality police officers, and we also need to pay them well. You know, they need to be paid well.
Um, absolutely. All right, folks, let's go to a break. We come back, uh, more on Roland Martin Unfiltered, including, uh, the continuing drama, uh, with these racist council members in Los Angeles. We'll talk to, uh, a Black City Councilwoman about that very issue, uh, and what is happening there and why they still have not left five days after this audio recording, uh, became public. Folks, uh, support us by downloading the Black Start Network app, available on all platforms, Apple phone, Android phone, Apple TV, Android TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV also. Uh, you could join our Bring the Funk Fan Club, all your resources, make it possible for us to do what we do. Uh, and so you can send check-in money orders to P O Box 57196, Washington DC, uh, 20037-0196. The Cash App is $R M Unfiltered. PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered. Venmo is R M Unfiltered. Zelle is Roland@RolandSMartin.com. Roland@RolandMartinUnfiltered.com. And of course, uh, you can, uh, get my book, White Fear: How the Browning of America Is Making White Folks Lose Their Minds. The book is available at Vin Bella Books, Amazon, Barnes &amp; Noble, IndieBound, uh, Bookshop Chapters, Books-A-Million, Target, uh, download it on Audible, or you can also order the book through your favorite black bookstore. We'll be right back.
When we invest in ourselves, our glow, our vision, our vibe, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
Libraries empower the community with education. Liberia Economic Development Initiative, LEBIE, is hosting the International Life Changers Awards and Liberia's bicentennial to celebrate LEBIE building the country's first modern public library and technology center. Join event host Roland Martin. Our honorees: Reverend Dr. Jamal Bryant, Zernona Clayton, Thomas Dorch Jr., Dana Lupton, Dr. Tammy Grace Deal, on October 29th at the CNN Center Atlanta. There are no public libraries in Liberia, but together we can change that. Get tickets at LEDINow.org.
When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
You know what's on the ballot. It's not just legislation and policies we believe in. It's democracy, our democracy. There's a choice on the ballot between freedom and fear, between cruelty and compassion, between chaos and community, between voting or violence, and the end of rights generations have fought for. The extremists have a plan, a roadmap for a nation where your voice is silenced and your vote is a memory, where they count their votes and cast hours aside. That's why this year, this fight, this vote is so important. Register, engage, volunteer, fight back against the disinformation and despair, and most of all, vote, because your vote is all that stands between our future and theirs.
Hatred on the streets, a horrific scene, a white nationalist rally that descended into deadly violence.
White people are losing their damn minds.
As an angry pro-Trump mob storms the U.S. Capitol, we've seen shots.
We're about to see the rise of what I call white minority resistance.
We have seen white folks in this country who simply cannot tolerate black folks voting.
I think what we're seeing is the inevitable result of violent denial.
This is part of American history. Every time that people of color have made progress, whether real or symbolic, there has been what Carol Anderson at Emory University calls white rage as a backlash.
This is the riot of the Proud Boys and the Boogaloo Boys. America, there's going to be more of this.
There's all the Proud Boys guys.
This country is getting increasingly racist in its behaviors and its attitudes because of the fear of white people.
The fear that they're taking our jobs, they're taking our resources, they're taking our women. This is white fear.
Hi, I'm Vivian Green.
Everybody, this is your man Fred Hammond, and you're watching Roland Martin, my man Unfiltered.
All right, the acting city council president in Los Angeles, Mitch O'Farrell, canceled today's city council meeting because two of its racist members, Kevin DeLeon and Gil Cedillo, uh, refused to step down after participating in, uh, this racist conversation that was captured and released, uh, the audio was released on Sunday. Now, uh, here is, uh, the city council president speaking.
Mr. Cedillo and I had a, a long, very frank conversation yesterday, and he made it really clear, uh, that he is taking into consideration the gravity of the moment and, and what he ultimately is going to need to do. And I can't state what that is right now, but we will, we will continue those conversations. If I felt that there were going to be two additional resignations today, I would not have canceled tomorrow's meeting. I just don't see it happening.
Well, look, they won't go, but the pressure has to continue. Now, Nuri Martinez, uh, she initially stepped down as city council president. Well, that wasn't good enough. Couple of days later, she was forced out, uh, as a city council member. Also, uh, the president of the Los Angeles County, uh, American Federation, uh, official there, he was a union official, he also was forced out, uh, from the union as well. Now, DeLeon and Cedillo have not said whether they plan to resign if both, if both refuse to leave. Keep in mind, DeLeon's term is not up until December 2024. Cedillo's term ends, uh, in December. Joining us now is LA Councilwoman Heather Hutt. She's the first black woman to serve on the LA City Council in nearly 10 years. Glad to have you, uh, on the show, uh, Councilwoman Hutt. So, I mean, this is, this ain't hard. I mean, there's no way in the world either one of these individuals ha, can have any integrity in terms of staying on the council, and there's no way you and the other council members can go on as business as usual with, with two established racists sitting there participating in city business.
That precisely. There's no other words. That, that is exactly how we feel. How can we conduct business knowing that this is the undertone or the feeling that they express privately? It, it is, uh, very complicated and, uh, disheartening. I'm angry, I have to say. Never i, in my life did I believe that any of those people would just continue for 90 minutes to spew this kind of racist homophobic statements about something that's near and dear to my heart, uh, the city of Los Angeles, gerrymandering and children. All, all of those things are special and should be protected, not spewed and abused.
You know, and, and as I sit here and, and, and think about this, uh, you know, what are their constituents saying? I mean, you know, are, are you seeing their constituents in their districts putting pressure on them? And, you know, because obviously there are organizations that have released statements, but what are the folks who they represent, what are they saying?
Very interesting that you ask me that. I went to a roundtable last night in, uh, uh, CD1, which is Gil Cedillo's district with the Awakun people, and they are very hurt of, of being considered less than human. If you listen to the tapes, they talked about them with no shoes on and little people and how did they even get here? They are hurt, disappointed. They have worked for many years to lift these people into leadership roles, and they feel betrayed. And so it was a very deep conversation about healing, but their own people are calling for their resignation, and they won't stop. They said they can't stop. They've gone to offices that are in the field, they've gone to City Hall, they're calling strongly for their resignation.
You know, and, and here's the thing that gets me, this whole idea of, you know, I've got to, I've got to work hard to regain the trust of the people, we have to have reconciliation. It's real simple. You can do that with your ass not being on the council.
That's exactly right. You can do it, uh, from, from grassroots. You have to be able to tell your friends and neighbors an "ah" as you're not a racist, because the actions we've seen are racist. So yes, you can do it, but you can't do it in a leadership role, and you certainly can't do it representing 250,000 people that are in your district.
Absolutely. And so, um, now, I, how, look, I cover city council, uh, in, uh, Fort Worth and other cities as well. So you have different council members who are on committees, who chair committees. Have they been stripped of their committee assignments?
Yes. A, a motion went in, a motion went in, but because we didn't have city council, we could not act on the motion. When we get back to, uh, council, we'll be able to act on the motion, but the motions have been written to strip those members from their committees.
Gotcha. And so, and so when the council meets as a group officially, then that, then that is going to happen?
Correct.
Now, um, Gil, he's up in December, DeLeon's 2024. Uh, is there any way, based upon the city charter, for council members to be recalled? So, or is the only way that they can get out of office, they actually have to resign?
They have to resign. The recall can come from the community and it's very, uh, timely. A resignation is immediate. And what people are calling for is a immediate resignation. They don't want the long time coming that goes along with a recall and the signatures that it takes and so on. They want these people to be accountable for their racist actions, and they want them to leave now.
Gotcha. Uh, well, look, uh, I, it is important, uh, it is necessary, uh, and, and surely it has to be also troubling for all the other city council members, uh, because you can't get business done while they're there. And also frankly, there's no, for me, there's no conversation. We, we, you ain't, you have nothing to say to me if you're still sitting there and you haven't quit five days later.
Exactly right. Nothing to say to me either. By the way, they, I, I was implicated in those, uh, tapes. No one's called me to apologize for implicating me, for considering that I would be any part of a gerrymandering, uh, strategy or scheme, especially not against black people. I was born before there was the Civil Rights Act. I've been fighting for this my whole life. I'm here to represent, we need more representation, not less. And if we pay attention to just the segment that you did before I got on, racism is rampant everywhere, and we need to fight it everywhere.
Let's actually speak on that, because, uh, on those audio tapes, uh, they, they will say, oh yeah, uh, let, let's go ahead and put her on, cause we could counter her vote. Uh, and so, I mean, they were sitting here, uh, with all this maneuvering, uh, and they gave the impression, um, that, uh, that, that, that you're basically a puppet who they can control.
It, it's appalling to me. I'm a woman. I'm a strong ass black woman that raised three boys by myself. If I was going for the okey doke, I'd still be with my ex-husband. I don't go for the okey doke anywhere. I'm not anybody's pawn, and I'm here to tell everybody that. I'm here to do the work, represent, represent these 250,000 people that agreed that I should be appointed to this position, and I'm here to do the work.
Um, and, um, and so it, I, I do find that interesting that your name was invoked and not one of them has reached out to you?
How about that? That's how I feel too. I'm like, really? You can't call and apologize? Like if you really thought that I had any value, you wouldn't feel that. My feelings are hurt, that I'm in a situation in my community where I have to explain my blackness and my woman-ness, uh, you know, my, my patriotism for democracy? Because undermining gerrymandering is serious, and that's what you implied that I would do? I have some words that go in the swear jar for that.
Uh, I'm quite, uh, sure. Uh, Councilwoman, uh, Heather Hutt, um, uh, actually, let me do this here. I, I have just a couple more questions. What has this also done in terms of the city and this black Latino alliance? Surely it's now fractured. Surely you have people, you have now distrust. Uh, what is, what is happening with other elected officials, other organizations, uh, to frankly not allow, uh, this to go forward as if that somehow that represents, uh, the, how Latinos or Latino elected officials in Los Angeles think about African Americans and think about this notion of power?
So we have, uh, another Latina woman on the council, Monica Rodriguez, and she reached out to me, um, on, uh, Sunday night before we even went into a regular work week, uh, apologizing and saying that all Latinos are not like that. Well, I know that. If I thought all were like that, I'd be just like them, you know, putting everybody in an "all" bucket. So I know better than that. I'm inspired right now because when you look at the film of people that are in the, uh, city council chambers or the ones that are outside the chambers protesting and asking for them to resign, they're of all colors. And I, I'm inspired by how people are trying to come together to make a general statement that this is not okay. And so this is important to know, that folks are not saying, oh yeah, this is who we are. They're saying this is not who we are, this is not okay. They need to go because they do not represent us.
Questions, uh, let me do these, the questions for my panelists, I'm sure, let's see if they have anything here. Jason?
So first of all, thank you for, for the work that you're doing. Uh, my question is, um, with the, the gerrymandering and, and the things that are going on in your, uh, in, in the city of Los Angeles, uh, what is the, the fix there? Because a lot of people have actually brought up the fact that 48% of Los Angeles is, is Latino, but there are only, I think, four members on the committee. Is that actually something that needs to be fixed, or is that something that they were just trying to grab more power?
I can answer this in a strange way. I, first of all, I can't think how they could think, so I can't answer you about what they were thinking about, because I'm not thinking like that. The second thing to know is the Department of Justice is going to look into this, and they'll give us those kinds of answers. I can't give you those answers, and I can't presume to think about what their ideas were. Can you? Can you figure it out? No. We know, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, Michael?
All right. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Heather Hutt. Uh, can you give us more details on the gerrymandering issue? What was the effect going to be? What, uh, because I was searching for this and I didn't, uh, really see this information. Can you explain the gerrymandering issue and the effect it would have, especially on the African American community there, uh, in Los Angeles?
I think I can. What they said in the tapes is that, uh, they could move the lines around so that there would be more of a Latino, uh, voting block in that space, which, which causes erasure. There, there wouldn't be an opportunity for any other race to run in that space so that they could have control of more seats on the city council.
Okay.
So, so the idea was to move the, when you're doing redistricting, the idea is to move the lines around so that you, uh, put a, a greater population in, in various spaces so that the vote would be significant.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Matt?
I have a two-part question, Councilwoman, and thank you for being on, uh, this evening. So the first question is, what happens in the event there is like a lawsuit or there's a belief that, that the city council has engaged in gerrymandering? Does the California Legislature step in? What happens in that instance? And then the second question is, uh, when is the deadline for the new maps? Because I know cities around the country are dealing with this, with the new census, uh, census data. So what is the timeframe during which the, the city council has to actually make remedial measures?
The new maps occurred in December 2021. This conversation they had was October 2021. So we are currently living in the new space. I was appointed to this seat on September 2nd, 2022. So I have only been in this space for 42 days. So. 2nd, 2022. So I have only been in this space for 42 days. So not a part of the history that put us in the maps and we're set now. When the Department of Justice comes in, they'll let us know what kind of changes need to occur.
All right then. Look, we certainly appreciate you joining us and sharing your perspective with us. And again, we certainly hope that these two resign so y'all can get on with the business of Los Angeles.
Thank you so much for having me and allowing me to share my story here on Roland Martin. I appreciate being unfiltered. I didn't use a swear jar though. I wasn't that unfiltered.
Oh, well, it's all good. Trust me. Look, we cuss all the time. So I keep telling folk, cuss and keep your blood pressure low.
Well, I know that's right. Thanks for having me.
I appreciate it. Thanks a lot. All right, y'all. Look, I'm just trying to let you know. Look, some folk need to be cussed out. All right, y'all. Gotta go to a break. We'll come back, of course, so we'll show our Black and Missing for the day and of course, more news as well. So a number of things to cover. Hey folks, do me a favor. I want you to download the Black Star Network app available on all platforms. Download it right now. You might be watching on YouTube. That's fine, but you still can download the app, Apple phone, Android phone, Apple TV, Android TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV. And of course, you can also support us. Your dollars make it possible for us to do what we do, to cover the stories that we cover. On Monday, I'm going to be in Valdosta, Georgia. There's a Valdosta. We'll be coming your way. I'm in Savannah on Tuesday. So again, we're going to be on the ground there covering the US Senate race between Raphael Warnock and Ed Foote, then also of course, the gubernatorial race with Stacey Abrams and that idiot Brian Kemp. And so again, your dollars will make it possible for us to do what we do. Send your check and money orders to P O Box 57196, Washington DC 20037-0196. Cash App, Dollar Sign, RM Unfiltered. PayPal's RM Unfiltered. Venmo is RM Unfiltered. Zelle is Roland@RolandSMartin.com. Roland@RolandMartinUnfiltered.com. You're watching right now on YouTube or Facebook or Twitter, Instagram. Hit the like button, y'all. Hit the share button. YouTube, why y'all tripping? 2,000 folks on, 540 likes? That don't make any sense. How hard to hit the like button? It's not. It's free. Click it and then go comment. Bunch of y'all commenting, but you ain't hit the like button. So when I come out from this break, we should be at more than 1,000 likes on YouTube. Got it? So that's right. Y'all got about two minutes to hit 500 more likes. Now, get your copy of my book, White Fear, How the Brownie of America is Making White Folks Lose Their Minds. Available at bookstores everywhere. You can order through Ben Bella Books, the publisher, Amazon, Barnes &amp; Noble, Indiebound, Bookshop, Chapters, Books-A-Million, Target. You can also download it on Audible. And of course, you can get the book through your favorite black bookstore. We'll be right back.
When we invest in ourselves, we're investing in what's next for all of us. Growing, creating, making moves that move us all forward. Together, we are black beyond measure.
Pull up a chair. Take your seat. The Black Tape with me, Dr. Greg Carr, here on the Black Star Network. Every week, we'll take a deeper dive into the world we're living in. Join the conversation only on the Black Star Network.
When we invest in ourselves, our glow, our vision, our vibe, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
We are in sunny South Dallas. The election is coming up. It's super important that folks know who they are voting for, but more importantly, what they are voting for. Y'all, we got some free shirts and free lunch right over here.
Freedom is our birthright. No matter what we're up against, we're sending a message in Dallas, in Texas, and in the country. We won't black down. That's what this bus tour is all about.
The housing cost is one of the most capitalized areas that we have found. People who are marginalized, that are brown and black, we are suffering the most. And I think that we have the biggest vote and the biggest impact in this election.
I'm voting for affordable housing, for sure.
We should not be paying the cost of a utility failure because our elected officials are too proud to say we need help.
I know that we can bring out our people to vote. It's a part of our birthright. It's a part of our heritage and surely it's a part of our present and a part of our future.
That's right. That's what's up. And we won't black down.
Forward that message to five friends because in that message, it's got links to how to get registered, how to check your registration status.
Like I said, 2:30, we'll start rendezvousing right here on this street. I am voting to let our voice be heard in the rural communities that, hey, we are people too. There are things that we need.
Free shirts, free food, and lots of power.
We are in Longview, Texas, where Black Voters Matter, 365.
Whatever type of oppression a white supremacist throws our way, we will not black down. We are in relentless pursuit of liberation of our people.
Freedom is liberation for black bodies and black communities to make economic change through political power.
Freedom is choice.
We won't black down.
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 Hi, everybody. This is Jonathan Nelson.
Hi, this is Cheryl Lee Ralph, and you are watching Roland Martin Unfiltered. I mean, could it be any other way? Really? It's Roland Martin.
Cherie Wright has been missing from Little Rock, Arkansas since September. Since September, folks, the 14-year-old is four feet, 10 inches tall, weighs 80 pounds, with brown hair and that may be dyed red and brown eyes. Anyone with information about Cherie Wright should call the Little Rock, Arkansas Police Department at 501-371-4829. That is 501-371-4829. Folks, a seven-second video of students reenacting the death of George Floyd in Louisiana High School during homecoming activities is circulating on social media. Take a look at this video. Okay, this took place earlier this week at Rose Pine High School. The student on the floor is reportedly black and teachers were watching this take place. Principal Joey Bartz posted this statement on Facebook yesterday. "We are aware of a video that was posted on social media yesterday showing a group of our students reenacting a very serious and heartbreaking event. The disheartening, unfortunate display was not part of what Rose Pine High School had planned during its homecoming activities, but was enacted by a few students. In no way is this acceptable, nor does it keep with the heart and spirit of what we teach and preach daily. The school is working with all parties involved, including their parents, guardians. We will work tirelessly to educate our students on better choices. After the punitive actions are taken, all we can do is hope and pray that we can learn from the mistakes made and become better human beings. Again, we are deeply sorry for the pain that this has caused and we know words are never enough. So we will vow to strive to become better through our future actions." With a broken heart, Jay Bartz. Now, we contacted Bartz and the Vernon Parrish School Board to invite them on the show. We did not get a response to this. The thing that jumps out at me, Michael, is, okay, the principal talked about punitive action against students. What about the teachers?
Yeah, you know, and also I would question, you know, you have to ask the question, okay, what type of culture exists at that school where the students would think something like that would be permissible? And this is one of the reasons why. So yeah, definitely with the teachers also. But this is one of the reasons why that treatment like that and other treatments that we have seen across the country and in schools and in society in general. This is why people like Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who co-founded the Association for the Study Negro Life and History and created Negro History Week, which became Black History Month, he said that the history of African Americans needs to be taught in every school across the country. Because a lot of the racism that we experience and the bigotry and the way we're treated comes from people not understanding our contributions to this, to this country, okay? And thinking that we're lesser than. And it's acted out when we see displays like that. And the other thing I want to know is, maybe you have this information, Roland, because this is my first time seeing this, was the African American student being attacked or was the African American student?
Don't know.
Participated?
Don't know. It's only a seven-second video. Only a seven-second video. So you don't have anything else there.
Okay. All right. Yeah, but things like this are disturbing and you have to wonder, what type of education are these students getting in their homes? See, are they getting like anti-racist information in their homes or are they getting information in their homes where they think something like this is permissible also?
I don't think it's hard to actually answer that question. Jason, I don't think that's a hard question to answer.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's difficult to answer at all. I think actually what Michael is saying, the opposite is happening. Now they're trying to ban books by black authors that talk about black experiences. They're trying to take any education that has to do with racism and racial oppression out of the curriculum. So we're seeing actually a backlash against things that make students better citizens, whatever background or race they come from. And, you know, I just have to say it. I think everybody's probably thinking this, is the young black man, I know I would be so disappointed in my son that he went along with what was going on there. I don't know that he knew the need was coming, but even the police thing where they got him on the ground, I would be really frustrated with my son for even going along with that. And I don't know what activity was happening there. But, you know, I think the first person I would want to talk to is the young black man. And, you know, so that he understands that playing along and pretending to be a criminal and pretending to be on the ground while you're being arrested at your high school is not acceptable. So I think that's one of the things that frustrates me with seeing this video. And certainly, we need education, as Michael was saying, we need education that students can learn where they actually become good citizens as they leave the school system. Not just, everybody says, oh, just math and reading and science. But no, we need actually to learn about what it takes to be a good human being and a good person and what's acceptable in our society. This idea that all of a sudden people are going to, you know, come out and be anti-racist has never worked before. So why are we moving away from teaching kids and exposing them to books and to ideas that will make them good citizens?
Absolutely. And, you know, at the end of the day, Matt, you've got to hold teachers accountable. They're supposed to be teachers. If they break up fights, they sure as hell should have said, what are you fools doing? And that should be a teaching moment right on the spot.
That's absolutely right. They should fire the teachers because it's indefensible. There's literally nothing the teachers can say that makes this remotely okay. They should punish the students harshly. But I kind of want to take a little different tact than Michael and Jason. I think both of them are right. I don't think they said anything wrong. But I think this is a direct result of what we've seen fomented since the presidency of Donald Trump. People are bolder and they're finding ways every day to devalue simple things that show inhumanity. I mean, George Floyd's life and his life being stolen from him was broadcast across the world and started protests across the world. So the idea that these kids don't know the gravity of this is just, it's beyond me. I can't think of anybody that has a conscience that would do something like this. And I think we do need anti-racist education and all of that. But I think we also need to recognize that some people are depraved and this is exactly what has been capitalized upon by particularly white supremacists in this age. So this doesn't surprise me and I think the only way to respond to this is to have extremely harsh measures, primarily on the teachers, because they're the adults in this situation. But schools punish kids all the time for considerably lesser things with very draconian punishments. So this might be a circumstance where they need to expel these kids to make the statement that we will not allow anything like this to take place on campus. And if it does, there's going to be a very harsh punishment.
Oh, absolutely. That's exactly, you know, what, you know, what should happen. And again, you expect leadership from teachers. That's what should be happening there. I saw this story here that I thought, well, actually, I'll do this in a second. I'm gonna do this in a second. Because you want to talk about being stupid. Wait till I show you where the president of iHeartRadio in Atlanta got fired for using the N-word and a black employee was in the car. Wait till I show y'all that particular story. And so we're going to break that thing down. All right, y'all, let's go to our next story. And that is, we're talking about the election and what is happening in this country. What we're seeing is, we're seeing now the focus, we're reaching in different states where the deadline to register vote is coming. So some deadlines have passed. Early voting, like for instance, in Georgia starts on Monday. And so that's what's happening right now. And so what we're looking at really is the effort to protect the vote. Already, Republicans have been gearing up since Donald Trump lost, yes, lost, calling this the big lie and all this sort of crap like that. But what they are doing is looking at targeting people, trying to get votes thrown out. They understand the margins. Remember, 2020, Biden Harris wins Georgia by 11,000 votes. And so if they can throw out 5, 10, 15, 20,000 votes, that could be the margin of victory for Brian Kemp in the governor's race in Georgia, for Herschel Walker in the race against incumbent Senator Raphael Warnock. And the same thing in other states as well, Transform Justice Coalition. They are one of the groups out there who is on the ground trying to protect folks right to the ballot box, offering assistance as well. And so we want to show this here, of course. This is information here that they are working on. They have what is called a community votercade taking place on Saturday, October 15. And you see the flyer. It says, Bring Your Cars and Join the National Votercade as we drive through Washington DC to rally community and voter education, free food, music, voter registration information, and a banned book giveaways beginning at 9:00 AM at the Covenant Baptist United Church of Christ in Washington DC. And so this is one of many efforts, many groups that are out there doing the work on the ground, y'all, on the ground to get folks to vote. That's what's happening right now. And so joining us right now is Barbara Onwy. She's the president of the Transformative Justice Coalition. Kim Crenshaw, she is, of course, a civil rights activist. Glad to have both of you here. And before we go, so we got to get Kim back because we were supposed to have an hour-long conversation with Kim on critical race theory because these people still are out here acting stupid. But we'll do that another time. But right now, we're going to talk about this here. Barbara, these type of events, explain to folks why they are important. Because some will say, well, all right, fine, you know, okay, okay, then you're out, you know, Black Voters Matter out there, you're passing out free food, things along those lines. But a lot of people like, don't live and breathe this stuff. They don't even know that an election is going on.
Absolutely. In fact, recent polling data has shown that in some African American community, only 50% of black folks knew that we have an election November 8th. That's data from about a month ago. We are determined to turn that around. And so we have been on the road. This is our seventh-day voting, voter justice tour. We started in Minneapolis and we are now heading to Washington DC. We've been in seven states and 14 different cities. It was time to vote. And unlike the past where people have done these tours, we've also brought around along the banned books. Because when they're saying that we need to vote, we also need to free the rights. We need to free their capacity to free the books. So to clarify our racial path so that we can do better in the future. It's so imperative that every person who is capable of registering to vote, do so and that they actually vote. It doesn't mean anything if you register and you don't turn out to the polls. We need you to vote November 8th, 2022.
You know, Kim, I keep saying this, and I've done all these interviews in the past two weeks dealing with my book, White Fear. And folks ask me, okay, well, you know, you say that we have to maximize that opportunity. And what I keep trying to walk people through is, this is a perfect example. If you've got 500,000 If you've got 500,000 African Americans living in a city, and let's say who, I'm sorry, 500,000 African Americans in a city who are eligible voters, they are of voting age. And then 300,000 of the 500,000 actually register. Then 150,000 of the 300,000 actually vote. Well, that means only 150,000 out of 500,000 African Americans who are eligible vote. And then somebody will say, whoa, that's 50% of all blacks who are registered. Yeah, but that's 150,000 who voted. It's 350,000 who didn't vote. So the reality is, when, Kim, when we maximize our strength, we literally can determine
And that is precisely why there is so much effort to make sure that we don't vote. That's why we're out here on the road, Roland. That's why we're telling people that there's an election. But more importantly, we're trying to tell people why it matters that they vote. I am so, you know, shocked and, and, and surprised to hear about the George Floyd reenactment. And at the same time, this is precisely one of the reasons why we're on this tour. Because what we're trying to do is to link the effort to suppress the vote with the effort to suppress anti racism. We're giving away 16, 6,000 books because these are precisely the books that are being banned in our schools. And the reason why, of course, is because after George Floyd, because after all of the millions of people who came out demanding solutions to racist police violence, demanding solutions to structural racism, those who don't want us to, to exercise political power created this boogeyman called Critical Race Theory. And they're using it to ban books. There are more books being banned. And the majority of these books are being written by people of color, queer people. They're all about how to make our democracy work better. They're being pushed out of the curriculum. And I think the story that you started with shows exactly what the consequences of that are. So we're giving away 6,000 books. We're calling our part of the campaign From Freedom Writers to Freedom Readers. We hope your listeners come out and join us tomorrow in all the places we're going to be until we get their vote on and get their read on.
And, and, and that point right there about these banned books, I mean, I mean, what these people are doing and, and, and I, and I have these people, Kimberly and Barbara, who literally drive me crazy because you get these, get these, these new fools and they come on and they say, oh, man, all you doing is shilling for the Democrats. And I keep saying, y'all, there are two parties on the ballot. That's the Democratic Party and the Republican Party. And when I explain to people, I'm like, let me explain to you what the right is doing. They hate Critical Race Theory. They hate diversity, equity and inclusion. They hate equity. They hate multiculturalism. They hate affirmative action, even though white women have benefited more than anybody else. They hate any conversation dealing with the issue of equity. They do not want to see parity. They don't want to see any of that. And what they are doing is using political power to actually stifle teachers, to stifle parents, to stifle professors. What Ron DeSantis is doing in Florida, what Greg Abbott is doing in Texas, what the legislatures are doing, what Brian Kemp is doing in Georgia is going all across the country. Now folk can sit at home and they can have these, they can have these silly discussions about, oh, I think you're wrong for how, for who you're supporting. But let's be clear, the agenda that they are focused on, they've made it clear, they want to wipe out any potential black gains. They do not want to see more black professors, more black teachers, more black contracts. And they're not even hiding it anymore. So, so I've never said the Democratic Party is perfect. I have whooped their ass when needed, but when I, what I do know, when I'm staring at an existential threat, I'm not going to be dumb and act like it don't exist. Barbara, then Kim.
Yes. And that's why we're saying to people, who sits in these offices determine your whole life. I mean, people try to say that they care about Black Lives Matters, but if you do, then you're voting sheriff, you're voting for your district attorney, you're voting for your attorney general, you're going to vote for your clerk of court, you're going to vote for the every position, the district attorney, you're going to vote for all those positions because they all determine if our lives matter, how we're treated and what occurs. People only want to vote presidential, beware people. You gotta vote midterm. You gotta vote for your governors. You gotta vote for all the members of the House of Representatives in the United States Congress. Oh, you gotta vote for those senatorial seats. You gotta be about the change that is required in this country so that black excellence can excel, can achieve, can be manifested. But these folks want to put us down and they want to be retrograde. Talk about they want to go back to the 1950s when people like us couldn't even be on TV like we are now. And Barbara is so right. One of the reasons why this is such an important moment is that there's a direct relationship between the attack on racial injustice and the attack on our democracy. One of the aspects of this debate that is so, I guess, disconcerting, Roland, is that too many people are, are sitting on their hands in the face of this effort to attack Critical Race Theory by saying, well, we don't know what it is. We don't, we don't teach it in the public schools. That, that's a distraction. As you point out, what they're really trying to do is to make anti racism unspeakable. And when they make anti racism unspeakable, they make racial injustice unachievable. And we can't have a democracy without racial justice. There is no daylight between the fight for racial justice and the fight for our democracy. So people need to get off of their hands. They need to recognize that the midterms are those elections that decide maybe the local officer. That's what has led to school boards that are trying to ban books by Toni Morrison, ban books by Ta-Nehisi Coe, ban books like Critical Race Theory, The Blue Is Eye. I can go on and on. You gotta see what they're doing under this attack on Critical Race Theory. And you gotta say, we've got something to say about this and start on November 8th. You know, Roland, I just want to add one other factor. We just left Morgan State University earlier today and it was shocking that one of the professors told us that most of the students that come have never seen a library, that they haven't had access to books, haven't had access to civics. None of that's being taught. There is a real attempt to deny us just like they did before when we couldn't even read or write without being considered a criminal, when it was illegal for us to read or write. Now they want to control what we read or write and we won't have it, not going to have it.
Um, let me go to my panelist. Let's see here. Jason, you first.
First of all, it's, it's an honor to meet y'all or it's an honor to talk to y'all. What do you think can be done specifically outside of voting? Because I know a lot of people who say, you know, votes are one thing, but in, in order to hold our elected officials accountable, what can we do when there isn't an election ahead of us?
Well, we have actually been speaking about that aggressively, about the need to be active politically 365. Don't think it's only about Election Day. It's about making sure that people you, that you basically hire, I said, but that you vote for into office are held accountable, that they do their job. If you're not showing up to these school board meetings, showing up to these city council meetings, if you're not calling these senators and representatives when you see that they're voting wrong, if you're not holding the saying, hey, I voted you in, I want to vote you out, you got to make sure that you are a democracy advocate 365. And I just want to underscore Barbara's point about showing up to the school boards. One of the reasons why this attack on anti racism grew so quickly is because of the hideous ability to go to these, these, these school board meetings and see white parents outraged about this lie that their children are being taught to hate themselves. What we didn't have was footage of black parents going to the school boards being outraged that their children aren't being taught the truth about this country. And if we don't show up and show out, not just on the election, but every time decision is made, then this is precisely the consequence of it. So we've got to look at this as an example of how bad it can get and say, never again. We, that's why we're calling this, you know, the good trouble. We're calling this From Freedom Writers to Freedom Readers. We've got to say no to this in the same way that we said no to segregation.
Um, Matt?
Well, I want to echo Jason's sentiments. It's truly an honor to be on with both of y'all. My question is this, how have you decided where the stops on the tour are going to be and when will you be in Texas? Because we definitely need y'all down here back.
Well, you gotta know that one of our biggest partners is Black Voters Matters and they've been doing the We Won't Flag Down in Texas. And so that's one way we do it. The good news here is that there's eight partners. We are working all across the country. Arkansas, we heard you, you want us to come? We've been listening to all these states that want us to come and guess what? For 2024, expect us. We will be there. We're going to do a larger tour. This time we're doing 14 states and 26 cities. Honey, get ready for the next rollout. And in the interim, we're going to be training like we just finished touring 10Z and Millennials being voting rights advocates. I want you to know we trained 37 already in this tour. 11 of them have shown up to be active. They're registering. One met me the other day and said, she just registered 55 people. She went back out and registered another 100. I want people to understand, invest in our youth, invest in them as we build the newest, largest voting block in America, which will be young people. And I just want to add that we are going to, so we're ride or die on this. We're going to be on this. And in the meantime, to learn more about Critical Race Theory, about anti racism, about implicit bias, we at the African American Policy Forum are going to continue facilitating and building. We have Critical Race Theory Summer School on demand right now. Go to www.aapf.org and you can sit into 120 classes. When this tour is over, we're going to have book clubs for all those who signed up to get one of these books. We're going to be ready for 2024. We're not going to let people tell us what ideas are legitimate, what we can read, what we can understand. And that's going to empower us to use our vote in the way that's necessary to save our democracy from the, from what's, what we're facing right now.
Uh, Michael?
All right, sisters, Attorney Barbara Onwine, good to talk to you again. And esteemed Professor Kimberly Crenshaw, great having you on. I played some of your clips on my show to educate people on Critical Race Theory. You were absolutely correct when you talk about the school boards because Stephen K. Bannon said that the way to political power is through the local school boards. And a lot of our people don't understand that. Before you leave, give us your social media information because I need to get in contact with you all. But Professor Kimberly Crenshaw, can you just give us a brief synopsis of what Critical Race Theory actually is? Because people like Christopher Ruffo have totally distorted it. And a lot of our people are confused about what Critical Race Theory is.
Yeah, so I'm so glad you asked that. And let me just point out, Christopher Ruffo and all of his ilk says, say repeatedly, they don't care what Critical Race Theory is. They, they couldn't care at all. What they're trying to do is take Critical Race Theory and use it as a Trojan horse. So let me tell you what Critical Race Theory is based on what they have attacked. Critical Race Theory is practice, is a way of understanding what racial inequality in our country is so long after the end of the civil rights movement. Why do our neighborhoods look the way they do? Why is there such a wealth gap? Why is there such a health gap? And so Critical Race Theory pays attention to the ways that racial inequality is embedded in the structures of our institutions, in the everyday functioning. It is the way in which we have to acknowledge and recognize that we still have to give our kids the talk. Why? Because police departments are still places in which anti black violence is regular and reinforced every day. It's the same kind of reason why we have to put our hands on our steering wheel when we, when we see the, the lights in the rearview mirror. This is the recognition that race still shapes life in profound ways. And colorblindness is simply a way to erase it, to make it unnameable and not legacy of everything we fought for are unspeakable. So I now tell people, if you want to know what Critical Race Theory is, look at what they're going after. Look at the fact that they're going after The Blue Is Eye. Look at the fact that they're going after the 1619 Project. Anything that tells the truthful history and contemporary consequences of anti black racism is what they are framing as Critical Race Theory. So you don't have to be a Critical Race theorist, you don't have to be a law student or a law professor to know that what they're coming after is you. If they're coming after you, then you sure enough better show up on November 8th. That's right.
Right there. All right, thank you.
We certainly appreciate it. Thank you so very much. And Kim, I, we will have you back because I want to have again, a one-on-one, a thorough conversation because and not only how we deal with this, because it's not going away. I lay this out in my book, White Fear. This, this is where we are and how they are going to be operating because they are attacking anything, anything that deals with the issue of race, that deals with equity. It does not matter. You, even Dr. Oz, that fool was running around, Mehmet Oz is running around saying that the Black Lives Matter movement was hijacked to talk about race. Well, it starts with Black Lives Matter, dumbass. These are not bright people. Barbara Onwine, Kimberly Crenshaw, we certainly appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
See you tomorrow in DC.
All right, absolutely. Thanks a bunch. Hey folks, we were, I was going to go to a break, but let's do this here. I want to dip into, are they still debating in Georgia? So let's just, let's just dip a little bit into the debate between Senator Raphael Warnock and that idiot Herschel Walker.
And, and just because he said something doesn't mean it's true. I have supported our police officers. I've called them and I've prayed with their families, like those officers lost in Cobb County when they were killed doing what police officers routinely do. You can support police officers as I've done through the cops program, through the Invest to Protect program, while at the same time, holding police officers like all professions accountable. One thing I have not done, I've never pretended to be a police officer. And, and, and I've never, I've never threatened a shootout with the police.
And now I have to respond to that.
We are, we are moving on, gentlemen.
I have to respond to that. And you know what's so funny? I am with many police officers and at the same time.
Mr. Walker, Mr. Walker. Mr. Walker, Mr. Walker, excuse me, Mr. Walker. Please, out of respect, I, I need to let you know, Mr. Walker, you are very well aware of the ruse tonight.
Yes.
And you have a prop. That is not allowed, sir. I ask you to put that prop away.
Well, it's not a prop. This is real. And he said, I have a problem. I never went to law enforcement.
Mr. Walker, excuse me, sir.
Yes.
You're very well aware of the rules, aren't you?
Well, he, he brought up the truth. Let's talk about the truth.
Thank you for putting that prop away. And as a matter of fact, we still have a lot to get to and we are not going to continue this. We're going to follow up with a question. And this is according to the CDC, homicide is the leading cause of death for African American youth. Mr. Walker, in 30 seconds, why do you believe this is happening? And what would you do to stop it?
Well, what I would do is hold people accountable, which is Senator Warnock not doing. Believing in no cash bail, no accountability, that is a problem. People must be accountable for their action. And the truth lies with Senator Warnock because he said he was going to Washington to represent Georgia. He went to Washington to represent Joe Biden. That's the reason we're in the mess we're in today because he represented Joe Biden and not the truth for Georgia.
Senator Warnock, this follow-up for you, same question. What do you believe homicides among African American youth is growing? Why are those homicides growing, sir? And how do we stop it?
Well, it's heartbreaking. And I've seen this up close as a pastor. I presided over some of these funerals. I've met with young people. And we have to have rules and laws in the society, which I support and I've invested in as a legislator. At the same time, we have to create opportunity. There's no sickness like the loss of hope. When people lose hope, when, when they, when they doubt that their life can be any longer or, or that they can dream of something bigger than the street they live on, a lot of things can happen. I grew up in one of those neighborhoods, but I had a nurturing family and I benefited from good federal public. I grew up in one of those neighborhoods, but I had a nurturing family and I benefited from good federal public policy, like the Head Start Program, like Upward Bound, like Pell Grants and low interest student loans. And to invest in our children is to invest in our best resource.
Senator Warnock, thank you. We are moving on, gentlemen, to the next question. And this topic is about personal integrity. Buck?
Yeah, we're going to shift gears a little bit here. Senator Warnock, in 2020, you tweeted this, unemployment benefits have expired. Rent is due and many Georgia families are at risk of eviction. My opponents are supposed to be serving the people in Washington, but they are clearly concerned with their own interests. Well, recent published reports say, talk about a property that your church owns, Columbia Towers at MLK Village in Atlanta. It's a home for the disadvantaged. At least a dozen lawsuits have been filed by residents evicted for not being able to pay their rent. Some of the outstanding balances are less than $30. As someone who receives more than $7,000 a month for a housing allowance from Ebenezer Baptist Church, how do you explain this to Georgia voters who are struggling currently to make ends meet?
Well, let me say that serving in the United States Senate and continuing to serve my church is the honor of my life. And it gives me a lens through which to do the work that I'm doing. But here's why you know I'm running against a desperate candidate. Anytime a candidate would stoop to the level of trying to sully the name, he and his allies, to sully the name of Martin Luther King Jr.'s church and John Lewis's church, you know that's a desperate candidate. Let me tell you about my church. My church is a Matthew 25 church. We spend every week, every day feeding the hungry and the homeless. They know that those false charges that they've created are not true. We, we stand up for poor people every single day. And I ran for the Senate to do at a policy level what we do at a local level every single day. I'm not going to be distracted by him and his allies. My people know the truth. They know the work we do every single day. And I couldn't be prouder of them, proud to represent the Senate and proud to serve Ebenezer Baptist Church.
So just to clarify, your position is that the allegations in these lawsuits are not true?
I am saying that it is very obvious that my opponent and his allies are busy trying to sully Ebenezer Baptist Church.
Now, you see the problem with the truth.
Switching gears a little bit here, sir, your, your ex-wife filed a lawsuit asking for increased child support, saying that she had to pay for childcare on days that your duties as a senator interfered with your parenting time and citing significant increases in your income. In 30 seconds, what is your response to that lawsuit?
Listen, I, um, I went through a divorce, like a lot of people. And while that was a painful period, what came out of that was two amazing children that I just talked to before I came on this stage. And, um, my children know that I am with them and for them and that I support them in every single way that a father does.
Thank you, Senator Warnock. Now to you, Mr. Walker. Recent ads have highlighted allegations of past domestic violence. They've raised questions about how transparent you've been as far as your resume. In one minute, how do you respond to voters who question your integrity, both personally and professionally?
Well, first of all, I, I've been very transparent and I'm not ashamed to admit it. And I said, I had a mental problem and I'd be a champion for mental health because so many people suffer from mental health. But to have people like Senator Warnock that demonize mental health, when I want to tell everyone out there, you can get help, don't listen to Senator Warnock and his people, you can get help, all you got to do is ask. All you got to do is ask. But the problem with the truth, you just saw it. You just saw it because he won't answer that about evicting the people from the church. And I told him, I would pay their, I'll pay their salary. You're evicting them right now during these hard times.
We have not evicted, we have not evicted those tenants.
I didn't write the article.
We, you, you're, you're.
I didn't write the article and most of the people are still in my time.
I'm okay with a discussion if you start talking over each other. We have a board.
We have not evicted the tenants. And, and he should take that money and pay it back to the veterans that he exploited while pretending to run.
See, you can tell that he's not desperate because if he had read in that thing, he would have saw that I had nothing to do with that. But he is so desperate right now, he really wants that seat. He's now telling you, I didn't evict anyone, it is written in the paper. I didn't do this. Well, Senator, you did. And it's okay to speak the truth. Do not bear false witness, Senator. Do not bear false witness.
Mr. Walker, to keep this moving, I want to follow up with you. You have been very open on your, Mr. Senator Warnock, we need to move forward here. You have been very open about your struggles with mental illness. And you even wrote a book about dissociative, your diagnosis of disassociative identity disorder. We recently asked if you were still receiving treatment and this is what you had to say.
No, that's all done and you don't need to. And that's why I tell people, I think one thing I told people is, I've been open about it and I was open about it, what, 14 years ago?
Mr. Walker, in 30 seconds, can you clarify this? Are you saying you no longer have disassociative identity disorder? Or is this something that you continue to this day to manage?
No, you don't have to have treatment for it. And I encourage people to continue to talk to people. I talk to my pastors. I talk to my pastors and I continue to get help if I need help. But I don't need any help. I'm doing well. But that's the reason why I tell anyone out there that is suffering from any type of mental illness, you can get help. All you got to do is ask. And I will always, always be a champion for mental health.
And just to clarify, just to clarify, how can Georgia voters though be assured that this will not impact your ability to lead if elected?
Because I'm ready to lead today. I'm ready to vote with the Georgia voters, whereas Senator Warnock has voted with Joe Biden 96% of the time. I'm ready to vote with the Georgia voters today.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on to our next topic. Tina?
And that topic, gentlemen, is health insurance. Georgia is one of 12 states that have not accepted federal funding to expand Medicaid under the Affordable.
Georgia, there's no way in hell y'all could even remotely think about voting for that fool Herschel Walker. I, I, Matt, Jason and Michael, um, I'm looking at comments on social, I'm looking at, I mean, you, that is absolutely one of the dumbest people I have ever seen stand before the public to want to be a United States Senator. I, I only, oh, who am I going to start with first? Um.
Well, you can start with me, Roland.
Uh, fine, go ahead.
Well, see, this is, you got to understand Georgia and the white people in Georgia that support Brian Kemp, that support Donald Trump, this is the type of Negro they like. They, they, Dana Loesch, how do you pronounce her name?
Lash?
She said, Lash, yeah, Dana Lash said she doesn't care basically what, uh, uh, what he did. He could abort baby eagles or what have you. This is about raw naked power. This is what these white supremacists want. They want a dumb Negro who they can tell what to do and he'll, and he'll go vote the way that they want. They, they want to take back control of the Senate. They want to take back control of the House, shut all this stuff down, all these policies that have been beneficial to African Americans. And they want to block, they want to stop any more of Biden's nominations to the US Supreme Court, as well as the federal bench. This is about raw naked power. They don't care how dumb the Negro is, as long as he does what they tell him to do. That's what they want.
Matt?
I think Michael's 100% right, but this is exactly why people have to not only go out and vote, they have to understand the issues and understand who they're voting for. What's so terrifying about this is there are going to be a lot of people who are going to see Herschel Walker and they're going to vote because they remember his football glory days. I mean, he's obviously not competent and to me, to be a Senator, and this is a question of basic competence, but that's exactly the fear. And I think Michael's right. I mean, what we're seeing is them beating this drum. If you notice in most of his answers, all he did was try to link Pastor Warnock to Joe Biden, right? And that's what we're seeing around the country is just the same, the same messaging that you can't trust Democrats, you can't just trust Joe Biden. And I mean, I understand that Herschel Walker's children, or at least one of his children, came out and said that he hasn't been honest about his past and a number of different things. So this is troubling. It's troubling that this, he has even any kind of momentum and I'm hoping that the voters in Georgia do the right thing.
Jason, at the end of the day, turnout, turnout, turnout. If more folk who like Walker turn out, Warnock loses. And again, the other issue is this here, uh, there's a, there's a third candidate who's running. And so right now, the polls are showing Warnock 46-43. This is actually looking like it's headed to a runoff. So we might have a repeat of 2020.
Yeah, I think this is going to be a really tight race. Uh, Herschel Walker is, is not the smartest guy in the world. I still think he and Tommy Tuberville would have a, would have a close one in an IQ contest. But I would say that Herschel Walker here, the thing that I'm most afraid of is the way that they talked about character glossed over Herschel Walker, the things that Herschel Walker has done. He put a gun to a woman's head and nobody talked about that. He actually did say, I want to, you know, to shoot out with the police, you know, in a domestic violence situation, but the police redacted it because he's a football hero. Like, these are the things that people aren't talking about. And the media, the, the, you know, mainstream media focused only on this abortion story, which to me was a pretty small story. And it, you know, I know it showed his hypocrisy, but putting a gun to a woman's head is a bigger story. The fact that he has a history of domestic violence, the fact that he has four children and didn't raise any of them. You know what I mean? And he says he talks to his pastors? What are they talking about? That's my question. What are you talking to your pastors about if you have four kids, about four different women and didn't raise any of them? Weren't there for any of them? To the point where your super right-wing son comes out against you and says that you're a fraud? How does, how does, I, I just, it frustrated me. I think that they went in harder on Warnock's, uh, you know, situation with his ex-wife, which to me, and, and you know, be mad at me if you want, that sounds like a lot of divorces I've heard. It doesn't sound like he put a gun to anybody's head or did something violent. And you know, when you leave town, you leave your kids with a babysitter. That makes sense. But they focused more on that than they focused on all of the things that are called into question with Herschel Walker's character. And that's what, what terrifies me about this race is how it's being covered, how they, they did not go after him or hold him accountable. Even when they showed that clip, they didn't hold him accountable for saying, oh no, I'm cured. He sounds like Kanye West. And I think it's ridiculous.
Uh, you're absolutely right. And that was the thing, Matt, as I watched that, uh, it was a horrible question. And they should have said, no, walk, it was sort of like, yeah, you had some issues in the past with your wife. No, it should have been, your ex-wife said you put a gun to her head. I mean, they should have walked through that and had him answer that. Uh, but, so I, I don't, I don't understand, you know, in terms of what that rationale was. But yeah, it was like they were more in-depth talking about Warnock, you paying more in child support opposed to this fool who literally, and then you have one of its own children who said, yeah, my daddy abused my wife, excuse me, abused my mother.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think Jason hit the nail on the head with everything he said. I mean, the fact that the media is glossing over that and that that was glossed over in, in those questions. And that, just like Tommy Tuberville, that there's being any credence being given to Herschel Walker when he's not a serious candidate for, uh, you know, the United States Senate is terrifying. And it's terrifying that the race is as close as it is. I mean, his support should be in the teens. Um, you know, somebody recently wrote about how, uh, I can't think of his name, but he recently wrote about how celebrities don't need to become politicians and how when we glorify celebrities, sometimes we empower them to do things they are not qualified to do. This is example number one for that. He should not be in, in a realistic race for the United States Senate. But the fact that he's that close in the polling is terrifying because that shows you that people are looking at Herschel Walker, the guy they remember who ran the football and not Herschel Walker, who's serious character flaws absolutely do not qualify him to hold public office, let alone the United States Senate.
Uh, absolutely. Uh, folks, a couple of other stories here. Former Louisville Metro Police Officer has pled guilty to roughing up protesters in 2020. Katie Cruz admitted in federal court to violating an individual's right by using excessive force during the Breonna Taylor protest. Cruz's actions led to escalations and clashes between officers and protesters, causing the death of West End barbecue owner David McAtee. She confessed to shooting an individual with a pepper ball while that individual was standing on private property, not posing a threat. Cruz pleaded guilty to one misdemeanor count of using unreasonable force. She's facing up to a year in prison and a fine up to $10,000. Folks, in California, Justice Department fines the Orange County DA's office and the Sheriff's Department with violating the civil rights when using jailhouse informants. The DOJ's investigation focused on custodial informant activity from 2007 through 2016 and discovered the custodial informant program systematically violated criminal defendant's Sixth Amendment right to counsel and 14th Amendment right to due process of law. It was found the prosecutors and sheriff deputies violated the Sixth Amendment by using jailhouse informants to get incriminating statements from people who had been arrested after those individuals had been charged with a crime. The department also found that Orange County prosecutors violated the 14th Amendment by failing to disclose exculpatory evidence about those custodial informants to criminal defendants. Matt, explain to people why this is so significant.
Well, when I read this story, I was really, really glad to see that Kristen Clark and the Justice Department have done this work. Because a lot of times people use jailhouse informants in prosecutions. But what is especially insidious in this case is that they use them to elicit statements. What normally happens is jailhouse informants will contact the authorities and say, I have information. They planted informants and they had those informants go try to get information. And I actually think they also violated the Fifth Amendment, which, you know, protects you against self-incrimination. So what they did is they had jailhouse informants go ask people about their cases to try to get incriminating statements. The Sixth Amendment, uh, under the Constitution gives you a right to a lawyer. So when they're saying it's, it's, uh, impinging on the right to counsel, it's saying that you don't have a right to a lawyer like you normally would to help you either decide to make a statement, not make a statement, or how you want to frame that statement. Because here, they're in custody, they're in prison or in jail. And at that time, you know, when they're making a statement, they don't have their lawyer there to, uh, to advise them. And then as it relates to the 14th Amendment, that goes to due process, which basically means if you're going to go through a, a system or through a process and a prosecution, you're entitled to that system and that process being fair. So here, if you don't give exculpatory evidence, which is evidence that shows you're either not guilty or mitigating evidence that shows you're not as guilty as you're being accused of, then that divests you of the opportunity to have a true due process that you go through. So when I read this, I mean, this is one of the best stories that you've had on about DOJ because this is really getting at the meat of injustice. A lot of times jailhouse informants, um, do and say things that are obviously just in their self-interest. But this is especially heinous because this is law enforcement directly stepping on people's constitutional rights by using jailhouse informants that they plant to try to get statements. So this is really incredible work and I'm glad to see that they've done it.
Uh, I, I, I keep saying repeatedly, Michael, this is, elections matter. And I'm going to keep, keep gassing up Kristen Clark in the Civil Rights Division because they are doing consistent, great work.
Absolutely. And you know, once again, a lot of this is in the tradition of why the Department of Justice was created during Reconstruction in 1870. Okay, it, it was created to enforce the new rights of the newly freed slaves, of, of African Americans. And they were cracking down on the Ku Klux Klan. You had the 1871 Ku Klux Klan Act as well. We saw a number of clansmen prosecuted, uh, behind that. So this is good work, but this is an example, once again, as you said, Roland, how elections have consequences. Now you compare this to the Donald Trump Department of Justice, okay? They, they, they were against holding police officers accountable. Uh, one of the first things that Jefferson Borahgarde Sessions III did when he became Trump's first Attorney General was back off of prosecuting police officers. And they reinstated the, um, they reversed the policy from 2013 from Attorney General Eric Holder, which backed off of charging low-level non-violent drug, uh, drug offenders with the harshest sentence. They backed off of that and they backed off of holding police officers accountable as well because he said it would depress the morale of police officers. So we see a total 180 in the way this Department of Justice under Merrick Garland is operating and the ones under the Trump administration.
Jason?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think Michael and, and, um, and my other counterpart totally just broke it down 100% that, uh, the DOJ, uh, is, is now under new management and they, and they've got new priorities. And I think, uh, what Kristen Clark is doing is the right thing, is, is cleaning up house around the nation and within our justice system, which whatever powers that they have, that they should use them the correct way. And when we look at the other DOJ that was basically a law firm for the former president versus this DOJ where the president is completely separate and they're investigating everything with merit, including his own son. Uh, I think you see the way executives should behave and also the way DOJ should handle their, uh, things within their purview around the nation.
All right, folks, got to go to a break. When we come back, our Education Matters segment, uh, I look forward to that. Uh, and we're talking about an effort to get more African Americans into, into the eye care industry. Folks, support us in what we do. Download the Black Star Network app, available on all platforms, Apple TV, Android TV, Apple phone, Android phone, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV also. You can support us with your finances as well, joining our Bring the Funk Fan Club. Trust me, your dollars make it possible for us to do what we do. P O Box 57196, Washington DC 20037-0196. Cash App is Dallasan, R M Unfiltered, PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered. Cash App is Dallas Sign, R M Unfiltered, PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered, Venmo is R M Unfiltered, Zelle is Roland@RolandSMartin.com. Roland@RolandMartinUnfiltered.com. We'll be right back.
When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
We're all impacted by the culture, whether we know it or not. From politics to music and entertainment, it's a huge part of our lives. And we're going to talk about it every day, right here on The Culture with me, Faraji Mohammed, only on the Black Star Network.
When we invest in ourselves, our glow, our vision, our vibe, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
So this is Roger Bow. I got a message for Roland Mascot. Oh, I'm sorry, Ascot Martin. Buddy, you're supposed to be hooking me up with some of these mascots. I'm sorry, ascots that you claim to wear. Where's mine, buddy?
Hey, yo, peace, world. What's going on? It's the love king of R B, Raheem Devon, and you're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered.
All right, fam, did you know that only 1.8% of practicing optometrists that the folk who did with your eyes are African American? Uh, y'all, 3.2% of students in optometry schools are African American and 3.8% of faculty in classes of optometry are black. Black Eye Care Perspective wants to change that by creating a pipeline for black students to get into optometry with their Impact HBCU initiative. Dr. Essence Johnson, Chief Visionary Officer, no pun intended, of the Black Eye Care Perspective joins me now from Dallas, uh, to discuss how their program is going to help more black optometrists. All right. So, uh, Chief Visionary Officer, okay, I got you. We see what you did there. Uh, so, uh, first of all, uh, what, what got you interested in going into this career? Because what often happens is, you know, this is an example of non-traditional fields, frankly, when you talk about for African Americans. And it's sort of like someone sees someone else doing it, then they go, wow, I didn't realize it, then they actually do it. So what's your story?
Yeah, my story is very similar to that. Many of us, it is that first eye exam that we had that got us introduced into the profession of optometry. For me, it was going to a career day and I, after hearing all this politics talk, I wanted to go and be a lawyer, but my grandmother told me I would go to hell for lying. So I needed to find a new profession. Um, and going into that career day where I went into the dark law school or lawyer room and then going into this bright, beautiful room and there was a lady standing there in a white coat. And she happened to be a black female optometrist and she told me all about the profession of optometry. And from that meeting, I fell in love. My new career path and future was set by going to that career day presentation in middle school.
Wow, uh, pretty cool. And, and so, uh, you've been an evangelist ever since?
No, yes, I definitely like to say I like to practice and preach optometry. And a lot of that is what we're doing here with Black Eye Care Perspective. We know that if you see it, you can be it. And we're trying to have as many touch points as possible with students, particularly students of color. And that's why we've been partnering with a lot of eye care industry partners to touch these students in any place of the pipeline that they're at. Our most recent initiative has been kind of on this Impact HBCU bus tour with VSP where we're going to the historically black colleges and universities. And this year we have been able to go to, um, Florida A&amp;M University. We've been to Tennessee State, Tennessee State University and just today and yesterday I was on the College of Paul Quinn College. We were bringing their Eyes of Hope Mobile Vision Unit to the campuses because we know that, one, the eyes are the window to healthcare, they're the windows to just our education and our learning system. And if students cannot see well, they cannot do well in school. There are actually studies that show that people who are not getting their eyes checked as a young child, they're five times more likely to not succeed and to not go on to higher education. That 40, 44% of students, um, that have uncorrected refractive errors, so just needing something as simple as glasses or contact lenses or other treatments to see better. They're not being successful in school and the students on college campuses are no exception. So that is why we have done these bus tours and we're bringing the clinic to these campuses so that they're able to have affordable and accessible eye care. But also with the hopes too, that if they see a black doctor of optometry, one, they won't be 30, 40, 50, 60, even a hundred years old, waiting to have their first eye exam and waiting to see their first black doctor. But we are right there with them and we're able to have those conversations about the career paths and opportunities that exist in the eye care industry as a whole.
Wow, uh, good, very strong there. Uh, let's go to our panelists. Uh, they've got questions. Uh, let's see here. Uh, Matt, go ahead. Since you're there in Texas, Matt?
Yeah. So, so my question is, is twofold. The first is for any student at an HBCU who's interested in doing optometry, what classes do you suggest they take or, you know, what major would you suggest? And then the second question is, is there actually, um, any subsidy for their study? Or is there like a financial element to help students who sign the 13% promise to actually go on to optometry school?
Well, yes. So a majority of students that are pursuing careers in optometry, they're biology majors, but honestly, you can be any major from any background. Of course, a lot of the prerequisite work is heavy in the sciences. So you're taking biology, chemistry, organic chemistry, physics. Um, and then of course there's your other core prerequisite classes. And then we have what we call the Optometry Admissions Test. There are 23 schools and colleges or schools and universities out there for optometry. And some of them are even OAT optional. So if you have a high enough grade in GPA, you don't even have to take the optometry's admissions test. Or they have geared it around if you are interested in maybe other areas of healthcare. So you took that MCAT, you took the DAT. You took the pharmacy tests or the GRE. You can also use those to apply to optometry school. Then with Black Eye Care Perspective, we've created this virtual pre-optometry club. So some campuses, they're able to have a pre-optometry professor, professional society or a pre-health, um, club. But we made one that is virtual. So even if you have those clubs on campus, you can join us virtually on the 13th of every month and be with a community of students and doctors and other professionals that want to see you succeed and survive in this profession and in this journey, even after you get into school, you get through school, you graduate. And with a lot of our advocacy work, there has been an increase in financial support for students. Um, before, many of us had to lift that burden by ourselves, but there are more opportunities for students to even get full ride, um, tuition, all tuition paid at some of the schools and college of optometry, increasing the amount of scholarships that are available. But also being a part of the club, we're showing them where those resources are. Oftentimes as a pre-optometry student, we discount ourselves as becoming incoming graduate school students. And a lot of those scholarships or grants that are geared to graduate students can also apply to those students that are applying to optometry as well. Um, and then we reward our students that are in our pre-optometry club by having them apply for a matriculation grant. We also want to celebrate them, um, in the spring of every year with our signing day. So just like in sports, they have that opportunity to announce what school or college that they're going to in the fall.
All right then, uh, Michael.
All right, Dr. Essence Johnson, thanks for coming on and sharing this information and, you know, uh, thank God for optometrists because I've been wearing glasses since kindergarten. Uh, so can you talk about?
Damn, you've been blind since kindergarten? Damn. You came out the womb with some jacked up eyes.
Hey, I have a third eye though also to make up for. I have a third eye to make up for it.
Nah, you need to focus on them too. Go ahead, what's your question?
All right, Dr. Essence Johnson, uh, can you talk about some of the career opportunities, uh, being an optometrist? And like what the demand is going to be like for the next 10 years, earning potential? Uh, and also if you could quickly talk about the difference between an optometrist and an optician as well?
Oh yeah, we can definitely do that. There's actually three O's in optometrist or in the eye care industry. So you have someone who's a doctor of optometry like myself. I went to undergrad. Um, and then I went to optometry school, which is a four-year program. And then you have that option to do a residency in your choice of specialty. My particular specialty is ocular disease. So I spent an additional year after studying doing that. Um, you also have ophthalmology. So those are students that went to undergrad as well and then they applied to med school. Um, and then they went through their med school program, which is often four years. And then they matriculated into the chosen field or specialty of ophthalmology. And then that is divided out into many other subspecialties. So you can do general, you can do cataracts, you can do retina. Um, there's just a lot of different options in ophthalmology. And then there are opticians. Opticians are our greatest support system. They can work in conjunction with optometrists or ophthalmologists. They can also work kind of individually. And many of them are working with the different facets of eye wear, um, in the dispensing, in the fitting, in the helping with the styling, the fashion pieces of it. So a lot of times and most of the times, we're all working in conjunction with one another in collaboration with opticians, optometrists, ophthalmologists, but also in collaboration and conjunction with all the other healthcare specialties as well. And then when we want to talk about just earning potential, um, they say the profession is saturated. I will say it is not. Um, as an optometrist, you can practice in many different fields. Before it was just private practice, but someone like myself, I practice in a hospital setting and a community health. I also go to the jail. Um, so the, the options are, are going to be kind of limitless. And there's also more options and opportunities for, for people who are entering the profession. So whether you're interested in younger people, children, older people, disease, specialty contact lenses, whether you want to be in a more organized, um, organization, or if you want to go into private practice, there's a lot of opportunities that are out there and that are being created. Um, and if you don't want to be in a clinical capacity, there's a lot of other corporate options, speaking opportunities, advocacy, um, that you can do as well as a doctor of optometry.
All right, thank you.
Um, all right. If anyone can ask a question? Jason, that's right, Jason, you disappeared, you came back. Uh, so Jason, go ahead and ask a question.
So, uh, I just wanted to know a little bit about, um, your program where you are, uh, helping students, uh, particularly HBCU students. And my question is, you know, I, I teach at a PWI and I teach in African American Studies. Is there anything that your program is doing for black students at PWIs and other non-HBCU, uh, HBCU, uh, settings? Sorry about that.
Jason, Jason, this ain't hard, Jason. Just pick her up, sit her on your lap, calm her down, ask your question. See, you trying to sit here and push away, that's all you gotta do. See, look, I got six nieces, that's how you do it. Now go ahead.
Right. So I, I guess my question was, is there anything that your program does for, uh, students at PWIs, black students at PWIs to get them into optometry?
So this is why we are hosting our Impact HBCU event. It's going to happen on this coming Tuesday, October 18th at 7:30 PM. And this is our way to virtually touch everyone. We say Impact HBCU because we know about 40% um, of doctors that they, that identify as black come from those schools, but the other 60% are coming from PWIs. So we wanted to have an event where it touches everyone, where they are being introduced to, to black doctors of optometry. And this year we're going to highlight Dr. Janelle Davison out of Atlanta, Georgia, and Dr. Devin Sasser, Sasser out of Maryland. And then we highlight the work that we're doing with our industry partners and with schools. This year is going to be the University of Pikeville, Kentucky College of Optometry. So I definitely encourage your students, all the students, everyone, everywhere, regardless if they go to an HBCU or not, to register on our website, blackicareperspective.com. Sign up for the virtual event, even if you're not up or you're able to attend, it's virtual. So that means it's going to be available for replay so that they can interact in the chat, get connected with the schools and colleges of optometry, get connected with other students or other alumni, other doctors that may have graduated from their school, um, and learn more about the profession of optometry. But also just learn more about the importance, especially us as black individuals, as individuals of color, of getting a yearly eye exam that can truly, um, not only improve your sight, but save your life.
Thank you, thank you.
All right then. Well, look, I, I certainly appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Again, uh, give the website again for people, uh, who missed it, uh, who want to get more information.
Yeah, get more information about Impact HBCU, about joining our pre-optometry club. We even have a black eye doctor locator. If you have not had your eyes examined this year, you can go to www-blackicareperspective.com. That's wwwblackicareperspective.com.
All right then, Dr. Essence Johnson, thanks a lot. All right, that is it for us. I appreciate it. Uh, Matt, uh, Jason and Michael, thank you so very much for joining us on the panel. Uh, I appreciate it. Shout out, uh, I don't have his number. Uh, how is Anthony today? Uh, Anthony Hampton, uh, Anthony Hampton, uh, who works for the show. Anthony is 35 today. He acts like he 53, uh, but, uh, he moves like he 53. Anthony moving a little slow. Y'all know, y'all, y'all know I ain't lying. Y'all know I ain't lying. I mean, he moved slower than Henry. No, I don't think he moved that slow. Uh, so, uh, this is his birthday and so want to shout out Anthony. Uh, we ain't got a picture of Anthony or something? Uh, anyway, we'll show y'all on Monday. Uh, so it's his birthday. Uh, and Henry, ain't your birthday coming up soon? Well, your 65th is when? Oh, you're not gonna take a shot at the control room right now? What's up? You don't want to show the control room now? See, that's what happens, y'all, when you, when you take a shot at the director, he don't want to take a shot of himself. Uh, so Henry's birthday is coming up soon too. Uh, and so, uh, yeah, yeah, trust me, Henry is older than me. All right, y'all, that's it for us. I appreciate all of y'all supporting the show, watching. Hey, uh, don't forget, Monday, Monday, I am in Valdosta, Georgia. That's right. Let me find out where in the hell I'm at. Uh, where am I going to be at? Uh, let me give you right now where we're going to be, where we're going to be, where we're going to be, uh, where we're going to be. Valdosta, Georgia. I'm going to be there, uh, at the Mathis Municipal Auditorium, 2300 North Ashley Street, Valdosta. Uh, we're going to be broadcasting the show from there and then we're going to be in Savannah on Tuesday. They, of course, trying to put Warnock over the, over the top. And so Valdosta, I want y'all to show up and show out. We broadcasting live. I have copies of White Fear. I'll be autographing the book there as well. So looking forward to it. Uh, and so thanks a bunch. Let me thank all of y'all who support our show. Uh, all of you, but first of all, I'm telling you, every Friday, we show you the names of the people who contribute. Y'all are amazing. Uh, but look, we gotta keep grinding. We need 2,000 people in October who give an average of 50 bucks to raise a hundred thousand dollars. Because again, y'all, I told y'all, our monthly expense is about $184,000 in two weeks. We are launching our 24-hour fast streaming channel. Uh, we're going to be on Amazon's platforms. Y'all, the first ones to know, the contract was signed 48 hours ago. And so we are excited about, about that, uh, as well. And so great things happening here at the Black Star Network. We got three other shows in development. I can't wait to tell you about those shows. So your dollars matter. So be sure to send your check in money orders to P O Box 57196, Washington DC 20037-0196. Cash App, Dollar Sign, R M Unfiltered, PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered, Venmo is R M Unfiltered, Zelle, Roland@RolandSMartin.com. Roland@RolandMartinUnfiltered.com. Uh, you also, of course, download the Black Star Network app, all platforms, Apple phone, Android phone, Apple TV, Android TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV. Uh, and of course, get your copy of my book, White Fear, folks. Uh, let's make it a bestseller. It's available at bookstores everywhere. White Fear, How the Brownie of America is Making White Folks Lose Their Minds. Ben Bella Books, Amazon, Barnes &amp; Noble, IndieBound Bookshop, Chapters, Books-A-Million, Target. Order through your favorite black bookstore or download it on Audible. Uh, and you know how we end the show every Friday, we show you the names of all of our donors. Uh, we do it every single Friday to show y'all some love. Thanks a bunch. I'll see y'all on Monday. From Valdosta, Georgia, holla!